Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the School Board Study Session of November 26, 2024. All board members are present. First on the agenda is the public forum, and we have one speaker, Jessica Mason, on the calendar and early release.
Good evening. I look forward to working with everyone soon. I'm here to express my concern regarding our school calendar and the number of early release days that are included, which I believe will be up for discussion tonight with the calendar. I speak on behalf of many parents and teachers when I say there are several concerns with the excessive number of early release days. But my primary concern is for our special education students, as have parents of their child with disabilities, and two on IEPs. IEPs are the centerpiece piece of the IDEA Act for disabled children and the basis for the child's entitlement to free appropriate public education. They specify the services and the number of hours to be provided to the student. For example, a child's IEP might state that they are entitled to 53 minutes of each math, language, arts, and academic skills five days per week. With the introduction of several additional early release days, these students are not getting their specified hours for each of the subjects, and there are instances where the services are skipped altogether, even though the days are considered full instruction dates and we receive funding from the state. PLSAS is also responsible for providing sped services to students who attend private schools in the district. These students aren't getting services on these early release days at all due to the shortened schedule. I believe the early release days are a clear and direct violation of the IDEA Act, and they expose our district to legal challenges and are not in the best interest of these students. Early release days also disproportionately affect children with unstable housing situations, lower-income families, and working families. I think we're putting some of our children in dangerous situations. Many are unsupervised for these hours, and a lot of them thrown in front of screens to pass the time. The cost of childcare for early release days is high, and it leads a lot of families to risk leaving children home alone for budget reasons. Also, a kids' go option for our younger and disabled middle and high school students doesn't exist. I encourage you to revisit why these additional early release days were added to the calendar in 2022. They were proposed as a result of COVID when we had a substitute shortage that didn't allow teachers professional development time for the purpose of data collection and data dives to help personalize the learning experience. Dr. Thomas, you encouraged these as a strategy to try, based on our low scores, to help give teachers more time to find ways to improve proficiency rates. While I don't think specific goals were set from implementing at that time, we can clearly see by the decreased proficiency rates that this strategy has not been successful. I fully respect and I appreciate the need for teacher prep and professional development time. My ask for you all is to consider just different options. I think shortened classroom time and direct instruction time does not align with our strategic plan to prioritize academic excellence, nor is it inclusive. COVID is over, the substitutes are back, parents are back in the office, and I would love to see children getting their full classroom days. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the purpose and agenda. I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Franz, board directors. Tonight, as all study sessions, it's our opportunity to dig deeper into key topics. And we'll be going over our truth and taxation and levy discussion with the board. We will have our initial conversation around budget reduction as a result of the levy vote, discussing our calendar drafts. This will be coming back to you after we hear more from the board tonight. And then we have one proclamation that will close out on this evening. So that is our topical focus for tonight.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda of what was just discussed is truth and taxation and levy discussion. And for that, I'm handing the conversation over to Director Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chair Franz. Our next board meeting is the meeting that will be asking the board to approve our property tax levy. You pre-certified the property tax levy in September. We have to have the pre-certification done by end of September. The information came out from MDE on September 7, I believe it was, and it has been pre-certified by this board. We have nothing changing in that time. As you're all aware, we did not pass a levy referendum this past month. So our property tax levy is going to be the exact same as it was in September. And the bottom line, I've provided you with a sheet that gives you the explanations of all of what the property taxes are, the statute that applies to it, and then the formula that's used. So as you can see from the property tax levy report in your board packet, our general fund levy is going to be 10.51% less than it was last year. And the community service levy will be 11.44% more than it was last year. Our debt service levy will be 0.54% more than it was last year, for a total of a reduction of 5.37%. So our taxpayers will see a decrease in the amount of total property taxes that our district will be sending to the county assessor. Next board meeting on December 9. We have to reserve time for truth and taxation, which means any member of our community can come up and ask questions or have their say about the property tax levy. We have to reserve time for that, and we will on December 9. So other than that, if there's no questions, we've talked about the property tax levy in September, and again, it doesn't change. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
What are any questions for Director Fredrickson on the truth and taxation property tax levy that is non-voter approved? Nothing has changed from the numbers on the totals. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the next topic. Okay. So the next topic is the budget discussion.
Thank you, Chair Franz, board directors. So tonight, just want to have some initial conversation with the board post our operating levy that went to the community. And I'll first start by saying a huge thank you to our community for going to the polls. This is the democratic process, as you've heard me talk about quite a bit. And our community at this time is not going to support an operating levy. And with that, we now need to start making some decisions as to where we will start to make reductions in our budget. And we are not alone in this situation. We think we've shared many times, many districts are facing the same situation. Quite frankly, on the way over here, on the radio, they were talking about Anoka Public Schools announcing a $21 million reduction, Manataca's announcing $6 million, we're probably in the neighborhood of $5 million. And what we're hearing over and over is our enrollment across the state is very flat at best because we are an aging state. That's where we get a significant amount of our resources. And with that being the case, and funding formulas being fixed where they're at, many districts are struggling and trying to find ways to go to their respective communities to add additional revenue in so much to what we just did this past fall. So what we intend to do going forward is engage a variety of stakeholder groups to determine where and how we'll make the reductions that we need to make. And I'll speak very openly here tonight, as I have been internally with many of our employee groups, that this is not going to be a fun or a fun task, nor is it going to be one where we're going to be able to easily make this happen without any kind of pain points. I think where we are forecasting to make a budget reduction, we are planning for a conservative approach, and we are building out a reduction of about $5 million. We anticipate we're likely going to be making more of a realistic reduction in the neighborhood of $4 million. But given the roller coaster ride that we can engage in around the legislative process, we don't know what's going to come in the future. We don't know what the forecast will be. We've got changes in federal administration, things happen locally. So we're building a buffer so that if we have to, we are prepared to make some cuts. We don't want to be at the 11th hour and then realize, oh, we need to find an additional $1 million at the last minute. So we are going to err on that. And what we've shared with our community throughout the campaign was that if this levy doesn't pass, there are key areas that, as a senior leadership team, we kind of put together some real preliminary scenarios of where we think we may be able to find the types of reductions that we would need to make. Because as many of you know, who have also been on the board for quite some time, know this is not the first time we've found ourselves at this situation. And so we've done a lot of rounds of budget reductions prior to this season that we're in right now. And we are going to find ways to reduce our budget, and it's not going to be one where we're not going to feel the impacts. And we will do everything we can to mitigate the impacts on our students, but in a budget of our size and as lean as we are, those impacts will be felt, even if it's central office reductions, they're going to be felt in terms of supports to schools. There will be functions that we'll just simply have to stop, or we'll have to roll those functions on other positions that are already overloaded, and so the efficiency will go down significantly. So there's going to be trade-offs along the way. And I'll just bring your attention to just a couple of source documents, and I know you all have seen these documents quite a few times. But also for our community, we've, again, for the broader community, we've attached our five-year forecast, and that's something that we've shared with you on multiple occasions. That's one document that we have uploaded today that walks through various scenarios that we had discussed. We've also put together our 10-year fund balance expenditure history, and then you also see the line graph that shows the various proposals. We've given multiple context as to why we landed on the 45 versus other aspects. And then the last slide, or the last document in there is the impact to the levy if the levy is not approved by the voters. So if we are going to cut, build a budget to reduce $5 million from our budget, they are going to be big-ticket items. There's no way that we're going to nickel-and-dime our way out of this situation. So I'll just share with you all, as a board and our community, the slide about the impact, everything on that slide is feasible to be enacted by fall of '25. The one aspect on that slide or that sheet, I'm sorry, that is likely for the fall of '26 because of MDE regulations is the closing of an elementary campus. And I'll just talk through a couple of things of that first. We are in the process right now of evaluating several of our elementary school campuses to address the facility's index rating, which means how much does it cost to operate the building? Everything from the actual turning on the lights, opening up the doors, running of utilities, to some of the peripheral expenses of running a building, such as bus routes, things of that nature. And yes, we are looking at staffing, and then we're also looking at the forecast of any kind of capital improvement. So all of that is, right now, being analyzed through Dan Powers and his team to best understand financially which building, based upon its age, its condition, et cetera, would net the most cost savings and balance that against impacts to school communities as well. And again, we're not going to close a school campus without having an impact. We know that. But that's something that we're already in the process of doing. So you will begin to hear, and I'll apologize upfront, a lot of "it depends" because we're going through some of these scenarios right now, kind of like if A happens, then B and C and D, and then if D doesn't happen, then we might, you know, those kind of scenarios. So it's a little bit preliminary right now, but we are looking at that. I know there's a lot of conversation happening throughout our school community, as well as the broader community. You know, I can't walk into a school to do school visits without somebody saying, please don't close our school. Like, I'm just here to visit classrooms. But that's the tenor, that's the mood right now. And that's a natural human response. So I want our staff and our community to know that when we make these decisions, and the staff have heard this in the Friday's Five, that we need to uphold respect, we need to uphold how we remain unified around our kids and our community, and uphold the integrity of everybody involved in many of these decisions. When it comes to the actual closure, MDE's rules don't allow us to close a school for the fall of '25. If we want to close a school for the fall of '25, that information needed to be uploaded and shared to MDE by October 31 of '24. So right now, even if we wanted to, we would be out of compliance with MDE's rules. So we are planning to have a campus closed for the fall of '26. And we'll present a variety of scenarios to the board as to how we'll land on a specific school. And obviously, there will have to be a good study done around boundarying where kids would go, our capacity studies for receiving schools, et cetera. So this is not something we rush into on a good day. And we are going to do this with due diligence to ensure that this type of impactful move is done so with the utmost respect and integrity of all impacted, because it will be felt. And very similar to what, I think, was it 2017, we went and we did boundaries or thereabouts? You know, that was a very critical impact to our community, and this is going to have that same sizable impact. The other aspect is whether the building itself will actually be closed, or will we be in the process of repurposing that? And one of the things that we are exploring is how this building may also come into play in addition to an elementary campus. And so the likelihood of a school program closure, but a repurpose of other building usage for that same space is something that is tied to that equation. So this begins to unfold the layers of the "it depends." But we are doing an analysis here on the central office building to better understand the retail market value of this building, and if said elementary closure would also have a connection for us to possibly look to the sale and the proceeds of this building to help offset future debt and then relocate central office services in a different building as well. So that's also some of the kind of bigger impactful kind of building closure conversations that we're engaging in. But just letting the board and our community know, we have moved out on this, as we have shared with the community throughout the campaign, and we will be bringing additional information to the board here in the very near future, and I'll talk a little bit about a timeline on that. Every other bullet that you see on the impact slide, the impact sheet, from class sizes to reduction in staffing, MNCAPs moving to a district facility to relinquish the lease, reduction in programs, all of these bullets that you see below are feasible to be completed and ready for the fall of 2025. Now again, will we take action on all these bullets? We will bring that as proposals to the board for your consideration and review. Ultimately, you all will make some decisions based upon those recommendations. But just when you think about the types of reductions that we're going to be making, we are going to be making kind of a Phase One of reductions that will take place immediately for the fall of '25. And then we would potentially see a Phase Two, possibly a Phase Three, depending on how things go financially over the short term here. But the building closure would be more of the Phase Two. So with that said, all of the other items, we are also right now developing the reduction proposals for your consideration that we'll present to you with more firm numbers. I don't want our team to bring forth anything to you until we have kind of done a little bit of a 360 to see, will this be worth the reduction, or will we net what we anticipate that we would net to offset the deficit that we see before us? There are some things that might have secondary or third-order effects, and those are some of the other things that we want to try to make sure that we are aware of, and if possible, build some type of mitigation. So we might make reductions in one area, and we would, from a simple budgeting exercise, yep, that netted us the dollars. But there might be a second-order effect that would cost us in the long run that we might not anticipate. So we kind of have to chase these tails down a little bit to make sure that the dollars we're truly saving are the dollars that we're going to save versus some unanticipated costs that will come by way of not having a certain type of program in support. So for example, we might make some decisions to reduce some of the staffing models that we're discussing in our schools. Well, with the reduction in staffing, we know that potential higher class sizes comes management challenges. Management challenges, if we impacted some of that tier-one support, whether it's deans, counselors, et cetera, and that tier-one support is no longer there, we are stretched more thinly to be able to mitigate some of those behaviors that are showing up in the classrooms. And so we might find teacher burnout going up, we might find dysregulation in classrooms and student safety going up. So those are some of the things that we want to make sure that we don't kind of throw the baby out with the bathwater so that we can kind of understand the holistic effect. And so if we don't have those supports in place, let's say we're still talking around behavior, and we have reduced the amount of tier-one supports, for example, or tier-two supports, the only remedy, if you will, of support becomes more along the lines of increased sped referrals. And then when we have increased special education referrals, we increase our cross-subsidy. And our cross-subsidy goes up, we've just further hindered this deficit issue that we've got going. So you can kind of see some of the cascading effects that we need to work through so that we're not rushing into failure. We want to make sure that we're successful, and we're going to be stewards of the resources and making the types of reductions that we need to make to balance that budget. We also want to be mindful not to gut the entire support structure for student success. And with dwindling resources and the expectations of academic excellence, it becomes a bit competing, if you will. So we want to make sure we don't overcut ourselves and then wind up falling short because we don't have the right supports in place to deliver on the outcomes that we are desiring for our students. So but then some of these, for example, when you take a look at MNCAPs, which has been a very real conversation that we're exploring, is, you know, are we able to save on some of the lease aid that we could then bring that program back in-house? And that's something that we're exploring to see, what does our space look like at the high school that we would be able to bring back MNCAPs into the high school space? We do have a little bit of room that we think we could renegotiate. We do have some areas of the building that are not as heavily used as others, and so we're looking at ways that we might be able to reformat some of that space there to accommodate that program. Now, with that said, we know that we'll likely lose some enrollment. Bringing that program back to the high school, there comes that secondary impact. So our partnership that's currently in existence is also something that we're going to have to discuss. We know that Farmington has, you know, unfortunately, their levy has failed twice, so their financial situation is no different than ours. And so whether we pass ours or not, that might have been a conversation that Jason and I were going to have to have as superintendents anyways. But needless to say, we're both in this situation, and through some mutual conversations, and I know their campaign has mentioned this as well, the likelihood of that partnership being able to continue is probably not that great. So not only for their financial bottom line, but from our standpoint, we have to look at relocating that potentially into one of our own sites to alleviate that lease expense that we're paying each month. So those are just some examples I wanted to share with the board of the types of discussions that we're engaged in. We have recently polled all representations from our various employee groups to have a deeper conversation and engagement around this particular list of things, asking them to think outside the box. Are there things on here that we're kind of in left field about? Are there some other aspects that you all are considering or that are thinking of that we might have missed here? And we're analyzing, we just had this meeting last Thursday, and about 40-plus people came together to start looking at this, and they heard this very similar conversation about there are no sacred cows, everything is being considered. So what we have on this sheet, in addition to any conversations that, you know, we hear from our staff, we're generating those themes that came from that, we'll be sharing that with you on December 9. But all of that information is going to help us determine how we make the best of this challenging situation before us, because as you've heard me say, this is not a time that we run away. This is a time that we need to be leaning in with one another to make some of these critical conversations to shore up our budget, but also maintain high qualities of service and support for our students so that they can be successful in the long run. And so tonight, we wanted to walk you through that process that we've been engaging with thus far, give you some examples of the conversations that we're having with many staff internally, as well as the senior leadership team. We are beginning to run some cost analysis on this, and I just wanted to also check with the board, you've heard this for months now, is there anything on here that you're absolutely saying that is not something that we should be running down? Because we are also spread extremely thin, and I do not have the human resources to continue to cost out, you know, tons of scenarios unnecessarily if we know that this is something that the board is saying, no, cut, but not in this space. And thus, our request for these value proposition conversations with the board over the past two years to understand the rules of the sandbox so that we are able to make critical decisions. Because again, it will take weeks, months, you know, obviously, to close a school. If that's something that this board is saying, no, we're not going to look at that, there's no way we're going to spend five months, six months costing out and going through all this engagement unnecessarily if that's something that's just completely off the board, and I just arbitrarily chose that, as something that would obviously take a lot of time. But a lot of these do, if we're going to do this and do this well and do this with integrity. So we are moving out with everything on this list and then some. And when I say and then some, it's as we learn from engaging with various stakeholder groups, and we'll begin a process that will be more public-facing as well, we may learn of other aspects that we'll have to take under consideration. And as you heard a month or more ago, the five-year forecast, if nothing changes, it's a big if, we're baking in all these assumptions, we're going to be in this space for the foreseeable future. And we don't have the capacity, you know, if we had to cut $4 million for the next five years, that's $20 million. I mean, folks, I don't know where $20 million is going to come. Obviously, we have time to have different conversations, we have time to watch, you know, what happens with some of these assumptions. Not all of them will hold true, but again, we're erring on forecasting in a conservative way so that we're prepared to engage in this kind of work. So I think that's where I wanted to just pause and open it up for just discussion more so around value propositions. more so around value propositions tonight. Our planned timeline is to come back to the board on December 9th for a non-action presentation that's going to have more of the numbers of some of these scenarios costed out to say, we anticipate if we make these cuts here, we forecast to reduce the budget by X amount of millions of dollars. Our reason for bringing it to you non-action is we wanted to have you all kind of see that for the first time, and then we, I am requesting that the board consider a December 16th, Monday meeting, special meeting. It's not on the calendar, but it is one that I would like to request the board so that we could come back for just a simple convening around the action that you heard the week prior, to say, yes, this is the direction we want you to continue to go. And again, for, for those of you here, and, you know, a couple of our newer board members, our budget doesn't get approved until June, but we have these checkpoints along the way that kind of gives us that directional support to say, continue and go forth. And that's what we'll be seeking on December 16th. Because there are some things, team, that we need to know well in advance of the winter break. We've got registration that begins in January, where our secondary students, middle and high school are picking courses. If we're reducing courses and/or we begin to reduce class sizes, we've got kindergarten enrollment starting in a few weeks, we've got our general open enrollment that, not open enrollment, our general kind of window of enrollment where people start to naturally make some decisions, also starts to pick up more so after the holiday. So some of this, we need to know by December so that when we go to print before January, that we're printing the accurate reductions of elective offerings, for example, et cetera. So there is some of that need to know of direction. Again, you're not voting on the budget, but you're giving us, yep, go ahead and make these cuts so that you can get that going and, and manage the registration that will begin in January, so.
Dr. Thomas, just to confirm, we're not voting on the budget, but we do have to vote on some of the decisions because of the impact of curriculum. Okay.
Yeah, so if we're, so again, staffing and things of that nature as we build out. So again, for the newer folks on the board or coming to the board, our target date for giving buildings and departments their staffing is mid-February. We kind of jokingly say it's like February 14th, is our little love gift. Here's their budget, right? And, and so we've, as you know, we've expedited that process an entire month. We are always behind the eight ball. So after my second year here, we shifted that so that we were competing for the number one draft picks of staff that are out there, as well as if we have to make tough decisions that impact our own staff, that they have ample time to go out there and compete as well and look for other opportunities. So, so if we're going to do that, we need to know a lot of this information well in advance because our staffing is going to start, our forecasting models, et cetera, all of that will start. And so, so Chair, to your question, and to the broader board and some of our newer members coming, we have used some of these sessions as directional support, it's the best word I can think of right now. You're not voting per se, but you are approving the direction that we are taking. Because the budget development is iterative, so every month there will be additional information coming to the board, building up to our preliminary budget that you would be presented to you in May, and then you would take your official vote on the holistic budget by statute, no later than June 30th. But it's that last business meeting in June that we typically adopt it, which I think is the second week or so of June.
What I'm getting at is, if we give you directional support, you need that, obviously, we've been through this every year with class registration and stuff like that.
December 16th is when we're asking.
Right. So with directional support, would a thumbs up do to do that? And that would be your direction going forward officially?
Correct.
Okay, so you could take action on that and adjust the calendars and the class schedules accordingly.
Correct.
What about class sizes?
So.
Because that's part of the planning, too.
That, that is. And so we are, we have already begun kind of scoping the class size ratios to see where we have ability to make those adjustments. All of that would also be baked into some of that initial planning. Because as we build out our staffing, we need to know, is this direction of the proposed reductions of staffing, for example, something that the board would support? And so if the board says yes, then we're going to go out with staffing model A. If you are saying no, then we're going to go out with staffing model B with our current realities. So, so that's what the importance for us as an administrative team, to have this iterative dance with you all as board directors, to keep you abreast of how we're evolving. And if anything changes, obviously, we bring that back to the board. But barring nothing changing, we continue with those checkpoints of thumb support, if you will, to say, yep, keep moving in this direction. Or you may say, this is becoming too impactful as a board, we feel that you should kind of hold that back and maybe, you know, not make that reduction or make that adjustment here. So then we would pause or not go forth in that direction. What I want to caution the board, and we've shared this over the years, and I'll stop with this and open a backup chair, is that I, I am requesting, do not find yourselves in a cherry picking contest. We will be presenting the board budget scenarios that are all encompassing. But the moment that the board begins to say, we will take this from, you know, scenario A, and that from B, and this from C, you start pitting staff and program and people against one another and your value proposition as a board, and that blows up. I've lived it, it's not a fun experience at all. So my recommendation to you as your superintendent, as we've done so in the past, will bring forth comprehensive scenarios that are all encompassing of all the factors that we've been discussing to get us to that bottom line. So I'll, I'll close with that and open it to the team here and any questions that you have. And I do want to talk a little bit about some other real quick snippets too of some categorical funding tonight, if possible.
Okay. So opening it up for questions and conversation or discussion?
Just want to be clear is what we're saying on the 16th. Is that, proposing that be an action item that chisels this thing in stone? Or does it tie your hands or our hands moving forward at all?
Director White, yes, it, so when we give directional thumbs as a board, that's giving administration the green light to move forward with these types of planning. So when we go to, if we go to green light on the 16th and say, yep, we're going to reduce these electives or this amount of classes or this amount of FTE as of right now, we go to print and it's done. So, so yes, it is, it's not a vote because you're not voting on the budget, but it is that directional support so that you're not in the dark, we're not in the dark, and our community understands this is the direction that things are going, so people can begin to plan as well.
I want to add on to that a little bit because if we vote, let's say, with the MINT CAPS, that requires reconfiguration of a part of the high school. It requires that data to also be ready to go for staffing into the course catalog in January.
Right.
So again, our thumbs up means that some of this is not reversible because we can't just take this back.
Yeah. If I wasn't, if I wasn't clear, Chair and Director White, when the board gives directional support, we're, we're, we moved out. We don't, we don't go back.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that's perfectly clear to everyone.
So when, when, if this is a direction that the board will support, understand, there is no going back. You, you now live with that to the June 30th final vote. You can't undo that. And, and again, I just want to be clear with the board and the community, and I can't express this enough, we've shared what we were planning to do as an administrative team for months, and we are, we've, we've already begun this process. So unless the board says otherwise, what you see at least on this impact sheet, we are going to be moving forward to completely cost out to bring forth a comprehensive recommendation to the board.
And just one more clarification, just to make sure we're on the same page. These aren't one-time cuts because we have cuts for the 24, 25 school year, I mean, sorry, the 25, 26 school year, which starts in June 30th.
Correct.
And then we have another four to five million dollars in cuts for the following year that we have to plan for.
Depending, nothing changes with financial scenarios. And, and again, the school closure is one that we just simply cannot, by MDE rule, do until the fall of 26.
That's what I mean. So it's not like we do this and we're pretty clear for a long time, it's we have to choose and do it again.
No, we are building out for multiple years of reductions.
Thank you. So it's a, a minimum of a two-year plan right now?
Depending, anything changes.
Okay.
Well, can I ask then, so let's be really clear, what could change? What could change? Because Sammy put out the proposal that shows if we do nothing and we renew only.
Right.
That doesn't move us out.
Right.
To look at your chart, it's 3.7 million 25, 26, and 6.6 million 26, 27. That's 10.3 million in two years. When we keep saying, what could change? I mean, a voter-approved levy, but one would never gamble on that.
Right, I'm just saying, but that's the if.
If we were Rochester, Minnesota, I think Mayo donated a bunch of money to them. I mean, we could just be brutally honest with ourselves and say, what will change?
Yeah.
And that's what I'm looking at.
Enrollment increases, I mean, we, the only way we're going to get revenue is the legislative changes. Given the new legislature makeup, they, there's a possibility they could undo what's already been done, which, again, depending on what they would undo, may or may not save us money. There could be an influx of enrollment. Again, we're not going to anticipate that, but it could happen. There could be other districts that are in the same boat as we are, and so our programs are going to be more attractive to some of those families who might open enroll. I mean, so there's a lot of, kind of, things that could happen. I mean, the economy could change, people may have more readily accessible money in their, there's just so many different things that we just have to kind of play each one out. And again, we, we look at, we do budget financial statements every month, so we know, you know, what's going on, we follow the legislature, we all have professional organizations that give us monthly updates, actually, probably daily, once the legislature needs. We're going to know what's on the slates for votes and follow those very closely. So we're just going to have to monitor everything then.
I'd just like to add, just looking at the list and kind of talking to voters throughout the levy process, you know, obviously, one of the biggest concerns is increasing class sizes. And I think, I mean, I know for my own personal, that would be at the very bottom of the list. In fact, I think any reductions we make should be as far away from the teachers and the students in the classroom as we possibly can. The one thing that's not on this list that I did hear loud and clear, and you've heard it from our district, you've heard it from other districts, and it's administrative costs. And I know you said, Dr. Thomas, we operate lean, and I've looked at this, and thank you for putting this together, that shows the historical information. I know we do not classify administration, all administrative positions under administration. There's many different titles here for them. And so I guess what I look at, back at 2018 and 19, and what it costs to educate students, which is in the round of like 96 million dollars, and now we're at 123 million dollars. I mean, I think the question has to be asked is why, and what's driving that cost? And I understand we have inflation, I understand we have, you know, more special education students or needs, but we also get additional funding. And so, I mean, I think, like I said, when I look at this, the, the thing that's not on this list is to really take a look at efficiencies within our district. And I think until we look at taking efficient, look at efficiencies and looking at the possibility of reducing administrative costs, I think we're going to continue to go down this path and continue to drive ourselves in a hole because we can't operate like we, we can't operate the way we're currently operating.
Sure.
And we can't.
Can I just, I, I mean, to be, I don't think it's fair to make an assumption that that isn't on the table and hasn't been on the table. I don't think it's fair. So while I respect what you're saying about efficiencies because they're super important, I think to state that in this scenario, I think is very unfair.
Yeah, and, and I was just going to clarify, Director Atkinson, in the third bullet, the reduction of staffing is across the entire district. So, and I gave a scenario just a few minutes ago about, you know, cutting central administration and that being far away from the classroom, but it's going to be felt because of lack of support or we're going to have to stop doing the service. So I don't know how much more I can say. There's no sacred cows. We're looking at every aspect. So from school staffing to district-level staffing and everything in between, staffing is staffing. So, and to your point, I would concur. This community has not really experienced what $632 per student gets you. Because we've been borrowing against our fund balance to remain competitive because everybody around us is at a significantly higher rate. Many, I should say, not everybody, many are. And so to live within our means is going to be a drastic change for many folks when you realize what $600, 32, whatever, gets you in an educational experience. And my fear, if I can just speak my truth with you all, is we're going to make reductions, and people are going to feel the 632 and say, I don't want that. I'm going to go to this district because they passed their levy. And, and then we're going to lose enrollment, and then we have this compounded effect. Be very honest with you, those are the things that we're going to have to contend with. The very thing that we might cut might be the one thing that's drawing people to stay or to come here. And if we can't do it all because we've tried for years, folks, to be all to all, and it's been very costly. So I'm not saying that there isn't value here and that we need to be stewards and find greater efficiencies. I don't disagree with that. There's stuff that we should be doing even if we pass the levy, quite frankly, let's be honest. And we're committed to doing that. But it compounds our, our unknown reality when we make the types of cuts that we're making. And granted, as I started, there are many districts in this very same situation proportionally. People might say, well, at least we're going to cut 21 million. It's almost the same percentage as a no-go. Proportionally, we're going to feel the same thing. So it's not about the dollar. But we also want to make sure that we don't lose the very thing that makes us competitive in not being able to deliver the best for our kids. And, you know, I always kind of jokingly said, we might not be able to afford a Cadillac, but, you know, a Yukon's not bad, right? We're going to have to find ways to downsize and right-size, but protect the core experience that's not going to force Sammy to say, we don't want this experience, or we're not getting what we need. The, the question about special ed came up, and is Michelle, yeah, Michelle, so one, so we've been having some conversations, so last, and Michelle, would you mind coming forward? Last week, I believe it was, we updated the Funding 101, was that last week? That we did the categorical and all? So one of the things that we're trying to help our community understand, because one of the things I've heard over and over throughout this campaign cycle in, in various circles, was about our Fund Two. And there was a lot of animosity about the universal meals bill. And had we had the universal meals, I would have supported the levy. Like, I actually got an email about that. And, and so that's our. And, and so that's, our community doesn't understand. Our problem of a general fund deficit, projected deficit, is a Fund One problem. And by state law, we cannot co-mingle other funding sources to mitigate that loss. And so we could have subscribed to the universal meals program and then some. A very healthy fund balance. We'll always take care of our kids who are free and reduced lunch. Want to be clear about that too, because people think that we're not. But we can't legally use that money to offset the deficit, even though we have it in the fund balance of our food services account. We cannot use it. And quite frankly, we are being squeezed federally with even some of the title funding of, of our Fund Two, for example, where we had greater latitude. And it's now going to start impacting our Fund One balance at greater levels. So case in point, and then I'll switch over to special ed. If we need to buy a new oven in one of our kitchens, by law, we can use our Fund Two revenue to buy a new oven. But let's say this new oven, because of code changes, our HVAC venting is out of code. We have to completely gut everything and redo all of our HVAC. We can no longer use Fund Two for that. That now becomes a Fund One expense, or if we have to upgrade or move power panels, et cetera. None of that Fund Two money can no longer be used. So we're getting squeezed in other areas too. And I know our community doesn't get into the nooks and crannies of school funding. It's very complicated, I understand that. But we're trying to break down the, the belief systems that our community is holding around, well, you've got all this money over in this pot, why can't you just bring it over to this pot? And as simple as I can say it is, by law, by statute, we can't do that with various funding sources. And another comes out around special education. And I want to be very careful how we discuss this because we are hearing a lot of sped costs right through the roof, and there's truth to that. We're experiencing that with our transportation this year. It's, it's extremely over budget in terms of where we were last year with sped transportation costs. And people sometimes will make the assumption, well, that's all federally reimbursed anyways. Okay? So why can't we just, you know, find ways to rob Peter to pay Paul a little bit there with the sped? And, and because that's all federally guaranteed, right? No. Right? I, our community needs to understand, we're already upside down federally with special ed. And just this year, our state put a little bit on top of that to the tune of about forty-five percent, give or take, right? And the big question that I was getting mainly from some of our staff presentations was, well, where's the cross-subsidy money that we got out of the legislation? And that is eaten up by the surge in identification. Okay? So our community needs to know that we are doing everything that we can to find ways to mitigate the, the financial challenge before us. But it's not as simple as take it from where you're above in another funding source and put it to where you're below. Okay? There's a lot of parameters on that. And I've asked Michelle to talk a little bit about that because we've started to outline that on our, our Funding One-O-One page to try to make it as simple as possible for our community to understand this. But special ed, it's got tails all over the place in terms of the funding structure. And if you could just kind of walk through a little bit about the conversations we're having around budget reductions, where you can and quite frankly, where you can't. And talk about, you know, just some of the factors that we've been engaging in around that.
Well, so the first thing, I think, well, there's two things right away to know is special ed is funded on a reimbursement model. So we are reimbursed here in Prior Lake about seventy-five cents for every dollar that we spend. So our cross-subsidy is about twenty-five percent of that, which is to the tune of depending on the year, anywhere from seven to nine million. Is that all right, Tammy? The state comes back and reimburses us forty-four percent of that, which brings us up to seventy-five cents on the dollar. So if we considered cutting in special education, dollars is not a dollar-for-dollar cut. It would be the first year, but after that, you're cutting seventy-five cents in revenue for every dollar that you cut. So that's just, so when we think about those things, we just have to think about what's that longer-term impact of saving, you know, if I save a dollar next year, I'm only saving twenty-five cents the year after and every year beyond that. Special ed also is ruled by maintenance of effort, which means that we have to maintain our effort. And right now, that means we have to spend the same amount next year as we spent this year. And the year after that, the same amount. So we can't, we can't decrease our financial effort. That doesn't mean there isn't F D E potentially to cut because with contract increases and different things, there's always a little bit of wiggle room in there. But one thing I need everyone to understand is special ed will never be whole until the federal government actually fully funds itself. So fully funded federally would mean forty percent.
An additional forty percent?
No, forty percent of cost, basically. Right now, they, they find about eight percent. And the rest is on state and local districts to fund.
Yeah, that, that's what I meant.
But that was brand new because before the state, they just made that change. And that, without a budget surplus at the state, that could get actually reversed.
Yeah. You mean the cross-subsidy aid?
Yeah.
Yes, so, but that's not federal, that's state.
No, no, I know, but when you're saying with the, it's a federal mandate. And the state, for the first time in a long time, actually increased it and brought up a share. And the argument from the state is the feds shouldn't be doing it since it was their mandate. So there's been a fight back and forth for what, twenty years now?
Yeah, there, there are definitely legislators at the state level. And it's hard to argue, right, that the feds aren't doing their, their due. So why should we be, be doing that and picking that up? So right now, it's very helpful to get the forty-four percent back from the state on our cross-subsidy. But ultimately, that, if we're only getting twenty-five, seventy-five cents on the dollar, we are always, no matter how much we spend on special ed, the cross-subsidy can be twenty-five percent of that cost. So there's no way to eliminate the cross-subsidy. Does that make sense? Because we're never going to be reimbursed on it. And then the other tricky part is it's reimbursed lagging. So it's, it's a year or two behind when they figure out, like, what are we going to spend? And what we know about costs is costs go up every year. So if we're getting funded on what we spent two years ago, that's also increases our, our cross-subsidy a little bit. Does that cover what?
Yeah, I, I think so. Thank you for making that point.
There's a question. I actually thought of this as I was driving over here. So let's say I have an I A P student who receives speech services. For every I A P, that's where you get the special education funding, correct?
No, we don't. So there's three separate funding formulas for special education costs that they run us through. We get the amount that nets us the least amount. And ours is always on a reimbursement of what we spend. So it's not about how many students we have, it's about how much money do we spend. So I get back seventy-five percent of a teacher's salary, seventy-five percent of a contracted service, seventy-five percent of instructional supplies. There is a model out there that's per student, but very, I don't even know any district that actually gets funded on that model.
So like, I've heard for, and this, I'm just going to state this because this is what I've heard and I need to get clarification in my own brain for this. If a student is diagnosed with autism, we get twenty-two thousand dollars for that student. That's not correct?
No.
That's one of the funding models.
That's one of the funding models, but we've never been funded that way. And I, again, I can't think of a district or know of a district that is funded that way because it does, it is so much more money. And we get, they run all of our costs, our numbers and everything through these three different scenarios at the state level. We get the one that's the least amount, and that's always the reimbursement.
So why is that?
It's a great question.
We're not capable of answering that. That would be a legislative agenda question.
Yeah, because my mind would be like, okay, my kid has, is autistic. And you get the twenty-two thousand dollars, but then you're also getting my nine thousand dollars from my state.
Yeah, you don't get, you don't get the.
And this is, this is, and, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's the crux of the misnomer now, that's that example you gave. If that's the universal belief out there, then the, the perception is we're sandbagging all this special ed money, right? And it's just simply not the case. And I think that's the biggest challenge that many districts are facing because on top of that, we've also had the ticker-tape parade of the largest investment in education since nineteen seventy-two. And I'm telling you folks, in our community, if that held true, why is there over four hundred million dollars in budget reductions in the seven-county metro alone? Right? Something is not clicking. And, and so I wish it were true that we had all this sped resource, that we had all this influx of cash that we're just rolling around and that we don't know what to do with. That is just not the case. And so when we make these types of reductions, the complications that Michelle and her team are going through to make sure that dollars make sense is a critical part of this process because we, we, we could easily find ourselves in bigger trouble making sped reductions that seemingly we should just be getting reimbursement for. And it's going to come back and it's going to bite us in the tail really, really hard. I would say the same holds true for, for some of our other categorical or our grant funding. You know, we receive Title III funding for our E L L. We, we saw, receive Achievement and Integration Aid to the tune of nine hundred some thousand dollars that are tied to the World's Best Workforce or the C A C R, or whatever that is, two, two-point-oh. All the expectations of the statute that governs those policies at the state, we're still expected to do all the work that are tied to that. But if we walk away from grants and things of that nature, we're now looking at an additional million that we're cutting because of other factors that we, you know, we don't want that funding. Oh, oh, okay, that's fine. But we're still held liable for the expectations of the statute of World's Best Workforce two-point-oh. And that is to disaggregate all the data, find ways that you're demonstrating and reporting back to M D E the closure of any kind of unforeseen achievement gaps in a variety of student demographic groups, like it or not. That is the law. So we are finding ourselves needing to use resources to do that work. We can't walk away from not serving E L students, right? That's a, that's a, that's a federal law. We could say, we don't want federal dollars. Okay, that's fine. We're still liable to deliver the letter of the law, which comes with costs of E L teachers, right? So we're going to find that in our general fund? Like, this is where our community will say, well, I don't want that because of X, Y, and Z factors tied to the politic of the federal legislation. Okay, that, that is, that could be the right of this board, and you could walk away from that. But we're on the hook, folks, community, for delivering one hundred percent of our efforts to every one of our students, irregardless of who they are and how they show up and the needs that they have. Some of our obligations come with funding. To walk away from grant funding is our own self-imposed unfunded mandate, quite frankly. Which, this is part of our problem. We have a REDACT that is killing districts right now financially, right? If you don't have a brokered agreement to get this done properly. But the money that they gave us in our district, we, we literally couldn't pay our teachers their salary to complete the training with the amount of money that we have in the state. So this underfunded or unfunded business that we talk about, this is also something that we have to contribute to our ongoing debt conversations that we're going to have to mitigate. Which kind of ties back to some of the calendar stuff, too. I mean, we, we're a little lucky right now because before saw this training coming. Part of that was built around that. But some of our colleagues that don't have agreements in schedules like ours, they're kind of up the creek right now, figuring out how they're going to afford to make this training work. So, so we can have those conversations about timing and schedules and calendars. Totally open to having that. I just want to make sure that we're understanding those second, third order effects when we make certain decisions. On the surface, it seems easy, but, but there's a lot below the surface. That's all I'm saying.
I have a few questions. When it comes to, you know, one of the things on our proposed list, you know, is closing one or more elementary schools. What does closing, and, and I know the answer right now is, as you said, we're not quite sure yet. We've got to do all the cost analysis and I get that. What does closing mean? Does closing mean we close it to everything and it sits empty? Or is it closing it as a school, but we still own it? The community can still use it for different things and money comes in that way?
So, so it, it could be one or the other or a combination thereof. So we could completely close a building and sell it, gone off of our ledger. We could close a building and mothball it and pay the bare minimum utility cost to keep the water pipes from bursting in the winter and it melting in the summer for future use. Or we could find ways to lease that space if we wanted to use portions of it for our purposes. And then perhaps, some of the ideas that I'm having with our team is around co-locations of services. Could we partner with Scott County Children's Mental Health and bring in, you know, mental health supports and, and shared use spaces, et cetera, with some of our county or city providers? So there's a multitude of things that we could do around closing a campus. But typically, it's, you're, you're closing it and it's locked up and it's just sitting for future use so you don't ever let that go. Or it's repurposed. So we might close the academic program, kids get reboundried to other schools, and we're using that for a different purpose as a district. So a scenario that we are reviewing is, would it make sense to sell the building that we own here and repurpose that site, not mothball? And net the proceeds of this sale to offset future debt and become more efficient with utilizing space in a co-located model, for example, and generate lease revenue?
And then that was my next question. Okay, so can you further explain, so say in scenario A where we potentially lease a building or another scenario where we just outright sell it? Where does that money go? Does that just go into our general fund? Does that get repurposed elsewhere? Like, where does that money go?
So it depends on whether you have an outstanding bond that pays for how you, ever you originally purchased it. So if there's a balance due in this building that we have to, that's on a bond, we have to immediately pay off the debt service before you can do any other things with the dollars.
So that relates.
We have to look at how much money that we owe on this building from the bonds that we've sold to finance it. And then whatever we sell it for, you pay off those bonds.
So that would be an input into what you referenced, the facilities index rating. Understand.
Right, what's the true cost, what's the true cost of operating a facility, you know? And again, as I stated earlier, it's not just about our schools. Like, every piece of real estate that we have, we're looking at to best understand, you know, some obviously are a no-brainer, where you don't get one high school. We're not going to close a high school, okay? But there are some other things that we can take a look at. This building is one of them. And, and so we do have to leave no stone unturned to see how we can make the changes that we need to make.
But there's another cost too. If we were to repurpose the building, we'd have to reconfigure the building.
There'd be some, there'd be, there'd be some cost of doing that.
So it's not a straight.
Does that net still a savings after we have to do some partitions or fo, whatever, yeah?
And if we were to use it for something else, like you mentioned, like community? That's community, yeah, that's Fund Four. That money would not go back into the general fund then.
Yeah, I meant community-like.
Right, but I think it's really, like you said, there's, there's basically walls between each one of these funds. You can't co-mingle them. So that needs to be considered too about what it could be. And if you try to do this for a short term, you're going to spend the money again to, to. And, and then, by the way, closing an elementary school means we are going to then have to make a decision, correct if I'm wrong, about enlarging class sizes across all elementary.
Well, that's, that would be, these are all on the table. And so as we're looking at class sizes, we would have some immediate conversations. But then, yes, Chair, a year from now, if we are going to. But then, yes, Chair, a year from now, if we are gonna uproot, you know, hundreds of kids, then they gotta go somewhere, right? And so we would see yet another surge in class sizes, you know, by a couple in each, you know, on average in each grade at the elementary level. So a, as they get distributed into different boundary zones or school attendance boundaries.
And then we've got busing costs additional potential because any elementary school closing will mean longer bus times, higher bus costs. We also have to hire logistic reconfiguration also for them. And, and, and then the cost of the last time we redid boundaries was quite extensive to add in elementary school. I remember that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Fine, one more question for me. Also, again, realizing this may be premature. But the elimination of middle school activities, I'm assuming that's extracurricular?
Correct, and that is something that we are exploring of, does that get moved to a fee-based structure under community education, for example? So they could be there, but it's not a cost that we're gonna take on. It would be something now billed to families. If you want to play, you pay. So unfortunately, many districts have gone that route. You know, I was a middle school principal. I lost all my athletics due to budget restraints in the district. So it, it, it has happened many times that that becomes a reality. So that's how, that's what we mean by that. It would get absorbed likely through community ed.
Can you expand a little bit? Sorry. Can you, oh, sorry. Can you just expand a little bit? Because I, I'm not a... Expand a little bit on many districts having to go through losing middle school.
So a, a way to contain costs and reduce your budget that is to, is to stop paying for middle school athletics and activities. So all the coaches that we're paying to, to lead middle school sports, we no longer have that cost because we are stopping that program. The likelihood is that community education usually then picks that up and still offers it, but now comes for a fee to the community, just like any of other community.
Yep, I understand that. I think, I think a challenge in going through all of this, at least a challenge for me, is when I think about, okay, I understand what it means to eliminate the middle school activities, but it's hard to give my value proposition when there's not a value attached to it. Because, you know, if I can't really see what it, what that might look like for our district to, you know, if it, everything stays the same, but it's just now a fee base that, that families will have to pay for that, you know, there's a lot of considerations that go in with that. You know, for some families, it might not be an issue. For some families, it might be a huge issue. And we know all of the things that extracurriculars give to our students as a whole person. So when I'm, you know, going through this list without, you know, it, it's really hard to, when you're, when you're not seeing the, the dollars that that might look like, to say, you know, this amount of money isn't worth what it could possibly do. And for me, I guess, in some of these things, and I don't wanna hijack the conversation, but when, when giving my value statement or my value proposition as going through this list, you know, I learned today that an increase in, in, I learned today that we could look at this list and this list could give us the $5 million in cuts that we need. I else, okay, am I correct?
There is actually two bullets alone that could give us the $5 million.
Right, and so that's, that's what I'm standing on. That's what I'm standing on. I learned that today. I learned today that increase in class size alone could get, get us to the cuts. But I can't, it's hard for me to understand what that actually looks like.
Yeah, we're talking class sizes of 38 in intermediate elementary, right? Like, that is unattainable.
Right.
And, and so again, could we do that? Yep, it's a simple math problem. But it's these impacts, folks, that, again, we're, as an admin team, we are working through some of these and why we're not, well, one, we're in the process of just costing these out still. But part of why we're not bringing this forward is because somebody might say, "Well, it's, it's only saving, you know, $20,000. I'll just randomly choose that number." And folks, I'm telling you, every penny is gonna count to find a reduction at this magnitude. And it's gonna be in some of the darkest places that we're gonna have to go to find it. But 20,000 is still 20,000. Even if things look the same, the experiences and the inequities that we create are gonna be significant. Because we will definitely create a have and a have-nots by some of those decisions. So, yeah, we could say, "Well, nothing changed." Well, a lot changed, actually, right? And, and those are the things, when you start talking about equity and giving our students and staff what they uniquely need to be successful, we have now just compromised that and created a greater inequity in our, in our community for folks that can easily afford to continue to pay for activities at the middle school level and probably pay for five other kids. And then some who are gonna say, "My kid's never gonna play, you know, the sport again because I can't afford the fees."
Can I just ask something about the middle school activities?
Excuse me, we've been, Director White has asked us a few times now.
I'd just like to zero back to your original question when you, when you finished up. It's what's, what's off, what could possibly be off the table as far as the seven of us are concerned? It seems to me that unless we have actual, at least estimated values tied to these, it would be irresponsible of us to say that anything's off the table. And so...
I assume that, but I wasn't gonna go within assumptions. This is part of why we...
This conversation has been, you know, selfishly for me, a bunch of my brain that I turned off eight years ago is starting to click back on. And until we have something to go on with all these, this conversation, there's chess pieces everywhere, going four directions at once. And so, again, everything's on the table for you guys. I think it would be irresponsible not to say, "All right, you've given us kind of a, you know, blueprint. Now, you know, put the wires in, you know, tell me where the outlets are gonna be, all that kinda stuff." And at this point, this is what we're going off of. This is, this is just me. And then, you know, when you come back again, then we can say, "Oh, well, if I'm gonna save $20 to close the pool, why would we do it?" You know?
Understand, yeah, good. And, and, and that is our intent to, for tonight, which is why I share with you all, we need to just have this kind of opening conversation so you understand this is the direction that we are committing to. This is what we're initially going to explore. And then we're gonna come to December 9th with a more finite parameter of some costing models. And then seek further direction to say, "Yep, given the costing now, Michael, team, go, go forth in this direction or pause on this one, but everything else, keep, keep going forward with."
Dr. Thomas, I wanna just ask a question because what I heard you say when you started this conversation was asking the board if there's any red line, you don't want to expend precious resources to go into. So, and, and response to Director White, maybe I misunderstood it, but I understood what you just said. And I think the direction that has been asked by, by administration is, is there anything on this list that they should not consider? So they don't spend the time.
Because we're considering it all.
Not, not for me personally.
Okay, okay.
I just have a question on the middle school activities. As a parent, we pay for middle school activities. So what does, can you just elaborate?
There could be different rates. It could go, it would go up higher.
Okay, so you're basically, okay, so just again, seeing the details on that, like 10% increase in middle school costs if we wanna keep them or whatever. And talking about inequities, there's a lot of inequities in our district. I mean, kids are paying $250 to park at our high school or 400 or whatever the number is. I haven't paid for it yet. But, so, I mean, I understand that's the goal, obviously, but that's not the reality, so.
What's not the reality?
There's inequities everywhere in our district. I don't wanna get into it, but if that's...
But you brought it up, so can I expand on that?
What is the parking fee? 400 or 250 for kids to park at the high school? If you can't pay, and if you can't pay for it, you have to park at the parking lot, that's far away, 250, thank you. So, I mean, there's a lot of inequities.
Yeah, but with that, we also have busing. If they can't afford that, we, so we have...
No, I understand that.
No, I, I know, I'm just trying to...
$4,000 grease trip. I mean, I could go on and on and on. I mean, it's, you know, it's...
I have one more question, just specifically to mincaps. What percentage of the current enrollment over in Lakeville is prior to Lakeview? More than half?
Have it offhand, but it is more than half. It definitely is more than half. I, I, I was going to put it at 60, 60, 40, ballpark.
Depending on the pathway.
Yeah, depending on the pathway.
Yep, yep.
I have a general question. I have two questions about the mincaps. It took us a long time, I think, to get the help pathways certified for those rooms and all that. That's one of my concerns, and I'm not sure if you guys already know this, which pathway would have to be eliminated. The other question would be Wolf Ridge. Because we just came back from a trip. That's a cost that is heavily absorbed by our staff in our district. So I'm not sure if those things are already known or if you wanna discuss it.
Field, field trips in general is something, it was a theme that came up when we met with our employee group reps. So Wolf Ridge is an example of a field trip. So we could mitigate costs by scaling back our, you know, experiential learning opportunities for our kids, i.e. field trips. Mincaps pathways, whether we eliminate or if it's, depending on saving lease and, and if that addresses what we need to address, we might be fine. But we also will look at, you know, what's, do we have a pathway that's just significantly under-enrolled? And, and so do we have to make some tough decisions and say, based upon enrollment, you know, we're gonna cap pathway to say we need at least this amount of kids in the pathway that we can justify maintaining a pathway? Similar to what we do with electives at the secondary. If we have X amount of students, we can offer it, but if it's below that, we just can't.
One of the things that I know came up coming into this year was actually capping the number of students that could even participate because we had cut administration fees so much and actually shared...
Our healthcare...
Yes, we did, and that was a capacity issue in our current space. Similar conversations would need to happen in more detail as we look at a potential different space, specifically not leasing and coming back to our existing spaces and what we would, what capacity we could find. And again, those are preliminary conversations we've had specifically at the high school where we are currently underutilizing some of the facility.
So our plan, Board, is to come back to you on the 9th with tighter financials around some of the key areas that we need immediate directional support on and continuing to update the board on some of the other medium and longer-term scenarios as well. And then that gets presented to you to ask questions, et cetera. And then coming back for just, I guess, I guess this format could be just a, a quick huddle on directional support and move forward.
So I do wanna bring up December 16th. So is that a, that is, that is a request right now? You're asking for an extra study session on December 16th?
Asking, well, yeah, we just felt presenting additional financial scenarios to you on the 9th and that night during, for the first time, to say, "Yeah, continue to go," without kind of being able to process that. So, yeah, we would be seeking an additional December 16th. I guess, study session format, just to get directional support based on what you had heard a week prior. Gives, gives the board some time to process this, ask some questions.
Can I get clarification on one thing, though? So these changes, because we've already approved the '24, '25 budget, correct? That's...
This current budget's like, that was approved last June.
Yep, it's approved. So these changes would not impact...
For all of '25, starting July 1 fiscal year.
The following year.
Right.
Correct, yep, yep, yep. Which would be the '25, '26 budget.
Correct.
Okay, got it, with Phase 2.
And then Phase 2 would be potentially '26, '27. And then within that, Director Atkinson, we have some short-term decisions, some medium-term decisions, and then we have the Phase 2 decisions.
I think that would be helpful to understand on the 9th, too, what the 1, 2, 3 looks like as well.
Yeah, so that is our plan. And, and just appreciate you all kind of understanding where we're at and really kind of level-setting with the board and level-setting with the community that this is our reality and we'll find ways to make this, this work financially as well as continue to support our students to be successful.
So we're gonna add a December 16 study session. And if anyone can't make it, we need to make sure we have a quorum. So if anyone can't make it, keep me on Martha. And, and copy me in, let us know so we can figure out where we stand with that.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda are the school, school calendar drafts.
So, can you recall, this is a pretty standard timeline that we take a look at, have a study session in November and then bring for board action in December. Our recommended school calendars for the upcoming school year. This year, we wanted to bring to you for consideration the possibility of adopting two consecutive-year calendars. And you see them in your board packet being slightly different. I'll, I'll first speak to the '25, '26 calendar. It looks very similar to the current year calendar and did, and it does include our early release days as was shared earlier in public comment and then Dr. Thomas spoke of that. I, I just want to remind us that we are currently utilizing our early release days, not necessarily for what we originally had intended when we adopted them just a couple of years ago. And the primary reason for that is that after adopting that, we had one year of utilizing it in that fashion and then the REDACT was authored. And we have adopted a new math curriculum at the elementary specifically last year. So we focused a lot of our energies around that. This year, all of our Phase 1 training, year one of Phase 1 training for the REDACT is happening. Not all of it, a, a large portion of it is happening as we utilize our early release days at the elementary level. We have been able to do some of the work that we spoke of originally when we brought on the monthly early release days to do the, the, the work of looking at student data and making curricular decisions on a monthly basis, more timely in nature. We continue that work. Moving into next year, we will have year two of the REDACT training for our Phase 1 folks, which includes, as we've talked about here at the board table previously, includes all of our K-5 teachers, all of our K-12 special education teachers, and a number of other identified, specifically identified groups of teaching staff that are required to... Phase 2 training is set to be finalized and what that looks like sometime in January, February, by MDE this upcoming January, February. So we'll know who's included in that Phase 2. It's primarily for secondary teachers. And we don't know specifically who will be engaged in that training and the extent to which the training will be. But in theory, we would be wanting this schedule, as we have proposed, to allow for that work to continue during our early release times in the '25, '26 school year calendar. Then again, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar, in that we, we, again, we have not recently looked at two years in a row. We've typically just adopted one school year calendar. But, it's a unique calendar, as you look at it, with regard to Labor Day and where Labor Day falls. I think it falls about as late as it possibly could fall. So, in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, on September seventh, that caused us to begin to look at, as we've heard conversation in the past, about the possibility of starting before Labor Day. There are some requirements that we would need to do to have authorization for that from MDE. Currently, that is the case, although I have heard inkling that this could be a legislative conversation as well, given that particular calendar year, possibly changing requirements around that. But, that remains to be seen. So, we wanted to look at this, and we started to begin looking at this with staff input when we thought about what a, a, after-Labor Day school calendar would look like, and how late that would go into June. And when we, it would take us into the second week of June, quite late, June eleventh. So, we, we began having that conversation, and are wanting to bring that forward for your consideration and feedback, and get input on that before we proceed in what we bring to you in December, either whether we bring forward two, two school calendars or just one, and what versions you would like to see. Wanted to have that conversation here tonight.
Let's open it up for discussion.
I'll start, just to clarify, to make sure that I'm hearing, hearing what you just shared. So, the, the bringing forth of two calendars, it's not just, it is not specifically for train, REDACT training, things like that. The second calendar is more so because of the date, Labor...
Yeah, we were thinking, we wanted to get this out in front of the community sooner if we were to make such a significant change. So, that would be the, what I would say, the primary rationale for considering that is more advanced notice of a significant shift.
And then, just a comment as I was, you know, going through the, the calendars. And I, I'm just gonna read my notes, because sometimes that's easier than me trying to... So, my questions about calendar are mainly stemmed from early-release days. We, we've, you know, heard at the, at, here in the boardroom that they're considered a gift of time, and I don't doubt that in, in many aspects. And I appreciate some of the context you gave regarding when those early-release days were adopted, to, you know, how we've had to kind of move, and for what reasons we've had to switch. So, I appreciate that context. I think that the challenge is, is that, I think my challenge comes from not hearing from everyone, whether it be staff members, community members, that, that is not necessarily a gift, and the challenges that go around it. And we've heard, we heard some of public comment, and I think that, that isn't new to any of us. I guess, you know, I wrote this question because it's, it's, it's my question to myself, it's my question to, to leadership, is how are we minimizing the disconnect from what we hear, that the challenges, to what's necessary, you know, for the training time that we need and all that? And I, and with the REDACT, those trainings are more needed by elementary, some secondary.
Currently in phase-one, yep, and soon to be in phase-two, some secondary.
Okay, and then, like, in our high school, those, those early-release days, though we might be given some kind of training, some whatever, I'm wondering if there is room for opening these up to what that time could be used for, when it's not a mandated training, such as REDACT? Offering our staff members some choice in how those are used? I don't know, I mean, it's just some of the things that are rolling around up here. But, I think, you know, here in the boardroom, we've heard, you know, that, you know, they're a gift of time, but we also do hear from, whether it be staff members or families, that these are not always a gift. And so, trying to just figure out how we best come together to have the time needed for the trainings that we are required to do. And also, in other spaces, is there space that there might be choice around those? And I, I understand we can't say choice to families, whether they come, or, you know, whether early releases, but maybe choice on what staff uses that time for? I don't know, that's, it's kind of, that's my, what's been rolling around, so.
If I may speak to that just a little bit, we've had greater flexibility at the secondary level this year with regard to that. And I'll speak to the high school specifically. The administrative team has worked with their, built, their building instructional leadership team to craft some of that work, provide that teacher training. Actually, a lot of it has been used this year as we're launching a new teacher evaluation framework, and to give some time to preparing our teachers for that new teacher evaluation framework. We've actually done that at the middle and high school, because they've not been participating, had to participate in any form of REDACT training. So, they, they've worked with their building instructional leadership teams to craft the time, as well as to give time for the, some of the original intended work in terms of getting into those teams of staff looking at student data on that monthly basis to make adjustments. So, I think that we've realized that a little bit more. But, certainly, is, the point is well-taken that we would need to continue to, where possible, where it isn't required, engage in how to best navigate that time for, for, for staff. The impact on families is definitely a known impact and a challenge. Certainly hear, hear that, and certainly understand some of that. Again, going back to the original intent, having these on a monthly basis. Certainly could look at taking that time and shifting it to maybe additional staff development time during the school year, not, you know, days off for students, to take that, because we essentially get sixteen hours. Compressing that time into additional staff development days is a possibility we could certainly, if that was the will of the board, for us to look at that at least, I'd say.
Could you remind me? My memory's not that great. We approved early-release days, but we had some before.
We just had four.
Four, and we doubled it to eight.
We did, correct, yep.
So, you could take two full days somewhere else.
Correct. Certainly is an option, so.
That's right, because now I'm looking at the calendars through more of a budget lens, and I'm, because we kind of really need to, more than ever, and that was where my, mine was going to, say, transportation costs on those days, or what, you know, if that actually is in fact a reality. So, my, my lens looking at the budget right now, or at the calendar right now, is definitely from a budget standpoint.
I think that's a great point that you bring up there, that we need to look at all things through that lens.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of feedback on that, I mean, seems to me, I, I apologize, but I'm kind of tunnel-visioning this on disruption of, you know, the students and the families. And if this time is required for a train that maybe didn't exist ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, whenever, I have no reason to believe that that, this time is not required. I'm just wondering, again, if, based on what I've heard, if we could, if we're gonna do this, it's gonna take the time, make it a whole day. I think, especially if it's on a Friday or something, that would be less, much less disruptive, even for working families. That's kind of where I'm kind of zeroing in. That, that's my personal opinion. And then, for the, this, the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, not necessarily in favor of approving two at once, like next year's board to approve the following year's calendar. Is there anything preventing us from looking at the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar march? We, we've, we've done, when we were building buildings nonstop, we were starting school early, we got the okay from the state to do it, because we wanted to get out in May instead of June, so construction started, and all that. So, it's not something we haven't done in the past. I'm, I'm just wondering if it makes sense to, appreciating what you mean with that weird Labor Day date, potentially coming back in the spring. And, and talking about that calendar at that point.
Yeah, certainly, if that is the will of the board to only adopt one. We just wanted to put it out there, we actually, to, to the point you just made, we began this initial conversation at looking at two years of calendar because we had a referendum, and we, depending on the outcome of the referendum, that is one that has been an impetus in the past for multiple years of calendars, when we've done that. That's what we're doing, looking at it in the first place.
Yeah.
My mind goes to a couple of different things. When we look at our strategic plan, which we have a new strategic plan, my mind goes to academic excellence and also optimizing resources. And I love what you said about the budget, because, like you said, the busing costs. If we could change that day to, you know, cut them back, change it to a Friday, where it's a full day, where we're not busing kids back and forth, I also think it would be a lot less disruptive to the students and the teachers. The early-release days are incredibly challenging, and I know that there's another school district that does have a lawsuit out against them because their students are not getting their IEP time. I, I, I can't even say, you know what I'm talking about, Special Education Services. And so, legally, I would like to get some, I wanted to make, want to make sure that we're following the legal guidelines, to make sure our students are getting their services, because that's, you know, it's eight full days. And so, I would like to see administration come back with a revised version of this, of how does it better fit with our strategic plan to really, you know, focus on academic excellence, which is putting those kids in the classrooms when it's not disruptive to their learning, and optimizing resources of the busing situation, like you mentioned. So, I have concerns about the legal issues regarding sped services as well. And I also would reiterate what Director White said about the second-year calendar. I, I remember last year, we kept making changes to the calendar, because I looked at Christmas, and thankfully, we're not in school on Christmas Eve. But I also remember, we did make changes to the calendar throughout the year. So, I think it's only right for that second-year calendar to wait to approve that until next year, as well.
I assume we're meeting the statutory requirement for hours in classrooms?
Yes, we definitely are.
Okay, that's, because I know that that is one of the pre-planning. I have no problem planning two years at once, I think it helps families.
We've heard that, that's another...
I think it also helps, like you said, with scheduling, but approving two years at once, I think is, is premature. But I don't think that's what was on the plan anyways. The only difference we made between the last couple of years, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, is to approve the calendar earlier. So, and, and actually, we adjusted the policy so that we didn't just, you know, we actually approved it earlier, not only for families, but also for planning, for budgetary purposes, all that kind of stuff. So, we had something to, to go against, instead of waiting. And I don't, I don't have any problem with that. I do want to correct something, because I think, Director Atkinson, you just said eight full days, I think it's eight half-days, isn't that correct, right now?
There's...
Two hour, we have eight two-hour early-release days.
Eight two-hour early...
Realized two hours of additional professional development.
But it's not eight full days.
So, that would give us two additional days, potentially, if we...
Right, but they're counted as full days, though, because the kids are here till lunch, so they're actually counted as full days, correct?
Not from an instructional, in its instructional hours perspective, they are not. We cannot count when they're not present, so.
So, they're not counted as full days?
No, they're only counted as portions of days.
Then I misunderstood that, because I thought, because they were here till lunch, it was counted as, they were counted as full days.
We do have to count instructional hours.
Instructional hours, they're statutory.
Yep, so, so we have to calculate, so, the, the Mars office and the business, associated with the business office, each time we look at a calendar, they give back the instructional minutes, and it takes into account those days and their reduced number of hours or minutes on that given day.
I would ask that the impact on families for a full day, an extra full day off to do it all at once be considered, simply because that does change even more of the dynamics. And I, every family's gonna be different, so I have no idea. But I do think feedback from the community is something that would be warranted before that much of a change were in place, especially after now they're, whether they like it or not, we're used to the current type of arrangement. I, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna sit myself in there, every single of our eight thousand kids' families to figure out the difference of not getting them on a bus in the morning versus a full day off.
Well, pending gathering that data point, and what I'm hearing from the board is to consider the consolidation factor for a variety of different reasons, to make that the full day, the two full days. Coming back then with a revised draft and some data that might suggest on how we would have the impact, plus for this family input. Bless you. Okay.
And with that, need to gather that input, all likelihood, we will not bring it back to the December board meeting.
Be like January.
We normally approve it honor before the first, the board meeting in March for the following year.
We have typically done it in December.
In December, all right.
I'm gonna defer to Director Fredrickson on this from a...
We've gotta get the...
Start and end date, right? For setting up the new school calendar for registration.
We're starting in registration, and we need to, when are they gonna start?
I know that we moved that out one time or another, and we moved it back again, but the question, though, so, are we going to at least bring one-year calendar back for voting for December ninth? And is that required for your planning now, particularly with the budget?
Well, if we want to get the registration up and running, which we're doing in December, then we need next year.
We need the start and end date, for sure.
So, we can still, we can make changes anyways.
Yeah, we can make, yeah.
I just wanna, I just wanna get clarification on what you need the board to do.
Yeah, I think, I think what we need, you know, our, we're, we're hearing, we'll go through the one, we'll present to you the one calendar. And again, that's, that's neither here nor there for us, we just, we were in that space. And then, we can for sure get our start and end dates, so that we can get the registration going. And we'll finagle the input as to what type of release, what day of release. And I understand the logic of what we are talking about here, but to your point, Chair, like, can't seat ourselves in every single family's household to gather a little bit of what that would look like. I think we would have time to bring that back by January. But for sure, in December, we'd want to come forward with the one-year, we're starting this date, ending this date, and then, we'll come back the following month to work the meet in between of that release. Okay, sounds good.
And with that being said, start and end date as proposed, looking, will of the board on twenty-five, twenty-six school year, after Labor Day, as proposed on this calendar. So, that's the version we'll bring back.
All right. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation on Inclusive Schools Week, and I am going to ask Director Osta to read that. Inclusive Schools Appreciation Week, December second through the sixth, 2024. Prior League Savage Area Schools recognizes December, goodness, December second through the sixth, 2024, as Inclusive Schools Appreciation Week. Whereas the Inclusive Schools Network and schools around the world have designated the week of December two through six as Inclusive Schools Week.
have designated the week of December 2 through 6th as Inclusive Schools Week. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is committed to providing an education in schools and classrooms that are welcoming and capable of educating all children. Whereas the educators of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognize that each child is unique, learns differently, and therefore learns better if instruction and experiences are tailored to their abilities and interests. Whereas the educators and families of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools have been working hard to ensure that classrooms and schools are characterized as being high-performing and inclusive. Whereas by their efforts to make schools and classrooms high-performing and inclusive, the educators and families of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools have contributed significantly to building a stronger and more inclusive community. Whereas the educators and families of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools deserve to celebrate their successes and wish to reflect on how they might even further improve. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools join with Inclusive Schools Network, EDC, and schools, districts, and communities around the world in declaring the week of December 2 through 6th, 2024 as Inclusive Schools Week.
And Michelle and I have decided to be inclusive with each other and speak to this together, you know, based on the programs that we see. I, I really just want to start and, you know, to speak to that last couple paragraphs there. I think there is a lot for us to be able to celebrate. I'm super proud of our staff and our team here. We really strive to make every learning environment inclusive of all our students, regardless of their backgrounds or lived experience, from the Unified Schools, the English Learning Programs, to the mentoring and tutoring pieces that we do and the celebrations that we have where our students take part in, the cultural fairs and all that. Our students speak highly of it. They're a big part as well, along with our staff, to make it an inclusive environment. And it's something, you know, we're super proud of as a staff.
Yeah, super proud that all students can feel welcome. Fun fact, December 2nd is the kind of a celebration, National Special Education Day in commemoration of IDEA being signed into law. It wasn't called that, it was like PL 142. But that's when students were given the right, if they had a disability, to be educated in their, in their schools instead of being told they can't. So, and for many of us, that's in our lifetime. So I think, you know, we need to celebrate that. And I think that's a lot of the reason why Inclusive Schools Week is the week of December 2nd. And if you were around, we have a lot of fun activities planned for our unified, all of our unified work. She'll be able to see any of the schools here coming that week.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Thomas for any type of superintendent information.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Franz. Just real quickly, I want to thank Martha for tapping me. The 16th, we, we will find a date. I might have to revise that because I am actually unavailable. I'll be out supporting our kids. So we will find another, a date on that week that works for the board. So stay tuned to that. So I apologize, I got a little too excited to get this on the same Monday. But we'll find one that week that works. Second, just letting you all know that I am the chair-elect for the Federal Legislative Committee with AMSD and MASAA. And, you know, we'll see what happens with the changeover with federal administration, if we'll have a department anymore or whatever those kind of changes may or may not be. But this is going to be a consequential year of lobbying. It, it's not so much about dollars. We're not going to have dollars coming in. There are going to be, I think, some critical aspects of advocacy for support for perhaps undoing some of the mandates. I'll just put it that way, simply put. And obviously, tracking to see what does happen federally. If there's any changes with the, the Federal Department of Education, what impacts will that have? And so I and several others will be going out to DC in the spring to meet with our electeds and folks in DC, but really bringing our voice here from the Southwest Metro forward to really ensure that, you know, we are getting our needs met. And so that, this is going to be a consequential year. But I just want to let you all know, for the lobbying purposes, that will start after the first of the year and then in the spring as well. And I'll keep the board abreast of what happens at the federal level with regards to our work in education.
Informational items. Have any except for waiting on the next study session. And then, of course, for the new board members and existing ones, I will be setting up appointments with each one of you to talk about scheduling for committees for next year and getting the rest of that documentation out and emailed out to everyone. Please remember open meeting law and do not reply all to any of the emails that go out. And that's it. Anybody else have any informational items? Okay, so next is future agenda topics. Does anyone have any suggested future agenda topics?
It'd be the two retiring board members' chance to really just.
To reverse the information, December 9th, well, speaking of the two, will be the reception as well.
Right, so at 5:00 PM before the 6:00 PM board meeting, we do have the reception that was sent out to honor our board members that are no longer going to be serving next year and thank them for their service.
Okay, so hearing no future agenda topics, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.